Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
Is that better, Sue?
Yes, that's much better. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, so an adjustment to the agenda under. I want to change eight C to eight D and add C just above that as an invite from the Westminster and W N E S U D district.
Oh, I do have a one. I did check with legal counsel for eight B. This board should not be approving that. That's an S U only approved.
Okay, okay.
So we can strike that.
So we could say, okay, so we can just strike that one out and we'll replace it with. We want to put B as the invite and C as the board retreat.
That's a Westminster.
Yeah, Westminster and W N E S U D boards to discuss whether we want to do that. Okay. Those are the only ones I have. Unless anyone has something else. Okay. Communication and public comment. Any communications? We want to welcome Cheryl Charles and she's going to help us with one of our executive session items. I don't see any, do you?
I don't see any, no.
Okay, review and approve board minutes from April 4th. Does anyone see anything, any adjustments to that? Any corrections?
I'll move to approve.
Pardon?
I'll move to approve just to get it out there. That's motion.
Yeah, we don't actually need one, but that's okay.
Priscilla? Priscilla? Hello?
Hello?
Priscilla, Jim McCollis, I'm here on Zoom.
Yes, we can hear you, Jigs.
Okay. I hear, I know where you're at. I know where you're at. The in the look, the, in the minutes, the little section on about the baseball team from Keene that Andy mentioned last meeting. It said that we were parenting with them. And I, I, I think it might be partnering or something.
Parenting, any kids, any more kids? Thank you, Jigs.
I didn't, I didn't know to what extent Andy was involved there. So I wasn't going to say too much.
Thank you, Jigs. Also, on the last page, we went into accept session. It wasn't contacts, it was contracts. Okay, so are any other corrections? All right, then we will accept the minutes as corrected. Reports, principals report. Sue, let's start with you.
All right. Good evening, board members. Let me pull up my, my board report here for you. I'd like to wish all teachers in the district a fantastic teacher appreciation week and especially the amazing and outstanding teachers at Bellows Falls Middle School. May is typically a very busy month with meetings and planning year end activities. Our first week back from vacation was busy with our first baseball and softball games. That should be games, not gases, as well as track competitions. Our seventh grade students, under the guidance of their social studies teacher, Mr. Kelly, and with the help of the reenactors from Fort Number Four, Mr. Schuman and Mr. Straub, they attached the Green Mountain Boys flag to our Vermont State Flagpole on Friday, April 29th. As part of Mr. Kelly's Vermont history class, students have been studying the Green Mountain Boys and their flag. As an aside, it was, it was great to have everyone there. Students were really excited and as were the reenactors. And I included pictures for you to take a look at. We will be showing the movie The Upsiders on Wednesday, May 4th to all students. The movie is sponsored by HCRS and explores all sides of cyber bullying, from bully to victim and the effects on family. It weaves together personal stories of teenagers, families, teachers and brain scientists. It shows the importance of empathy, which by the way, is one of our school values and resilience, to shifting behavior and highlights new laws and established programs that are already reducing bullying in schools and communities. After viewing the movie, students will return to their advisory to participate in circle discussions. Our students have participated in both the PDIS climate and thought exchange surveys as requested by Superintendent Haas. We had good participation in both of those. This is Spring Spirit Week at Bellows Falls Middle School. The eighth grade student leadership group with Mrs. Morris have created a great theme week that will culminate with all students and staff participating in games in the gym on Friday. We are excited and look forward to hosting students visiting from Saxons River Elementary School on May 10th, Central Elementary School on May 11th, and Westminster Elementary School on May 18th. Our Grafton students will be coming to visit in June. Students will tour the school, meet their teachers for next year and enjoy a treat from our fabulous cooks, Pat and Megan. Our librarian, Emily Graves, is sponsoring an edible book contest on May 12th. The only rule is to make edible art that has a book theme. Our eighth grade students will be going to Six Flags on Monday, June 13th, and their move up day is June 14th. Our current enrollment is as follows. Grade five, 46 students, grade six, 39, grade seven, 68, grade eight, 72, totaling 225 students. From our last meeting, April 4th to today, our average daily attendance is 196.21 students. We have tentative projected enrollment for the coming school year of 2022, 23. Grade five will be a large class of 61 students. Grade six will have 46. Grade seven will have 71 and grade eight, 68, with a projected total of 246 students. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions from the board members that they might have. Thank you.
Any questions? No?
This is a question actually for Andy. Will the board get the results from the climate and thought exchange surveys before the end of the school year?
So the thought exchange was just, and we are going to do a presentation on it. I was going to do it at the F U. It was just on our vision statement, just on that feedback on, do you like it? Do you not like it kind of thing? But happy to share that. And then with the Swiss data, Carrie Newton, who's our restorative practice coordinator, is compiling all that. So we, we can't put that together and present that to the different boards, so.
Okay.
That's the climate, Swiss, I'm sorry. I said Swiss. Swiss is the company that, that generated the climate survey. So yes, we can have that. I, I think it should be ready by the next meeting.
Was this survey taken by students and at each grade level or just eighth grade? Or how widespread was the survey?
Laura, we had kids at your school do it also. I can't remember, I thought we went down to fourth grade. Is that, or did you do everybody?
Third and fourth.
So we did, we did third and fourth grade with the elementary schools. And then we went all the way up through 12th grade.
Okay, very good. Are we still looking for an eighth grade science teacher?
I can, I can answer that. Yes, we are. And we have two applicants and we, right now, we're planning to do interviews next week for that position.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. I'm seeing Laura.
Yes, and I also have Carrie's report. Her car broke down on her way home and she is currently awaiting the tow truck. So I can give the, she emailed me her report, so I can give that to you right now first, if that's okay, Priscilla?
Go ahead.
Okay. She says they have 153 students, 30 in kindergarten, 22 in first, 33 in second, 28 in third and 40 in fourth. She says, "We have had a busy few weeks at CES. Last week, we had Senator Jeanette White and Representatives Carolyn Partridge and Leslie Goldman meet with our fourth grade class to discuss Vermont legislature and students asked some great questions of our distinguished guests. We hope to have the fourth graders visit the State House in Montpelier before the end of the year. We thank Bellows Falls Rotary for their donation of kitchen items and to Kathleen, I'm not going to say her name correctly, Gavatsky, for her help in prepping the flower beds in the rain last week. So many teachers and staff members, Judy Vesprey, Erica Bisby and Sons, Olivia Clark, Lori Ballaton, sorry Lori, Ashley McCants, Carrie Pickering, Jen Burke, Erica Frank, Peter Lowry in attendance, and we put a good dent in the bed preparation. Peter Lowry and Erica Frank have been hard at work making new beds for our food gardens as part of our farm to school project based learning." She also reports that second graders will soon be visiting Pete's Farm Stand as part of our farm to school efforts. We are pleased that this local farm is owned by some of our parents, Teresa and John Jazinski, Janiszen, Janison? Sorry, Teresa and John. I think it's Janison. They have donated seeds and been a proud supporter of, supporter of our farming work. Please support our local farmers. We begin second, our second week of S Back next week. And we ask third and fourth grade families to help support our students in getting a good night's sleep and sending in on time to be ready for the last week of assessments. W N E S U principals have been participating in training and calibrating sessions to look at schools and instruction across Vermont and locally. We attended a learning walk last week at Braderborough's Green Street Elementary School and we recently hosted the team at Bellows Falls Union High School. We have one more learning walk at W N S U and in fact, at the middle school in May. We thank CES families and staff for their support of our spring fundraisers. We recently had the Life Touch photographers in for spring photos, which we, which recently went home. And last week, we collected our local Halliday's fundraiser. We thank Halliday's and Kathleen for their support for our needs. We had our April P T C O meeting last week. We are planning a family event with Southern Vermont Natural History Museum for early June. Stay tuned for more details. Families of fourth graders save the date. Monday, June 13th from 5:30 to 6:30 is the CES Moving Up Ceremony. Like the past two years, it will most likely be in the parking lot of the high school. More details soon. We will be presenting data at one of our next meetings to discuss goals and plans for meeting areas of needs. We thank all school staff this week during Teacher Appreciation Week. CES has been amazing throughout the past two years especially, and we support them. Please share your appreciation with a card, a letter, or any kind of support this week. Sincerely, Carrie Kennedy.
Okay. Laura's.
Okay. All right.
Ask questions. We'll just kind of scoot onto yours, Laura.
Okay, because I can't answer any questions on her behalf, so I'll just move into mine. Our enrollment is at 76. We have 16 kindergarteners, 10 first graders, 14 second graders, 16 third graders and 20 fourth graders. Classroom happenings are kindergarten. They have learned 52 sight words to date. Pretty impressive. In first grade, they started a goods and services economic unit and they're going to be creating their own business where they'll be doing a service for others or selling goods. So they're going to have a marketplace day coming up. Second graders have been collecting data and organizing the data, representing it in graphic representations, and then answering questions to interpret what the data shows. In April, they concluded their poetry unit with a final poem that portrayed a strong feeling. In third grade, Chief Roger Longtoe of the Apunaki Tribe was in today and students listened to songs and learned about hand crafts, listened to a story and learn more about the tribe in general and its history, as well as the petroglyphs in Bellows Falls. And fourth grade finished up their Wax Museum character projects at the end of April and they recorded their speeches to share with families and created a slideshow, which was phenomenal. And they are learning lots about decimals. During our last early release PD afternoon, Andy came in and provided a handle with care training with a focus on verbal de-escalation. We had our coin challenge during the, during our spirit week prior to break and we raised over $900 for our P T O. It was super exciting and it was competitive and it was fun. And because of the money raised, every student now gets a free yearbook. We also had a visit from Dr. Quentin Quark of Slapstick Science, who presented the notion of motion, which is an introduction to Newton's laws of motion. And we even had a write-up in the reformer, so hopefully you caught that. This week, as Sue and Carrie both mentioned, is Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week and the teachers and staff at S R E S are appreciated every single day, but this week especially. And our P T O showered us with appreciation by bringing in a gift card tree, which was filled with gift cards to local businesses. So thank you to our P T O. Also this week, we are having a drumming for success residency. Steve Ferraris is at S R E S this whole week and will teach students Afro-Caribbean and West African hand drumming skills, as well students will learn how to do their part in order for the class to make music together. The success of a group revolves around contributions of the individuals. And we will have a performance where we'll invite family on Friday at 2:00. Tomorrow, our fourth graders, as Sue shared, will be part of it. Well, Kathy Ray Henley will be coming to Saxons River, the Bellows Falls Middle School counselor, and visiting with our third graders. And then on May 10th, our fourth graders will go to the middle school for a tour and then also have the opportunity to participate in a question and answer session with current fifth graders who previously attended the middle school, or previously attended S R E S, I'm sorry. Coming up, May 11th will be an early release day with an S E L focus. Also at May 11th, as you know, Wyndham Northeast is hosting Lynn Lyons. So I encourage you all to come. It should be fantastic. She's a phenomenal speaker with lots and lots of great suggestions for families and educators. The week of May 23rd through the 26th, we will have our MAP assessment and we're also hosting a book fair. On May 24th at 5:30, we're having an incoming kindergarten family play night and registration. So incoming kindergarten families be looking for information soon. And on May 30th, as you know, is Memorial Day. So there is no school on that day. Any questions?
Board members with questions?
No, lots going on.
There is a lot going on and you got, all of you give such great and awesome reports. We really appreciate being updated on everything that is going on. Thank you so very much.
Do read them.
Yes.
Thank you.
And look at all the pictures that you send. Okay. Now Superintendent, do you have an update for Laura's?
Yeah, please, just a couple of things. One, and a lot of things that both Carrie and Laura touched on, but and Jigs brought up at the beginning. So our Reading with Ribby program that we are partnering with the Keene Swampats, that's that reading program that encourages students to read. And then they get to go to a game and go out on the field. I got an email from Kevin Waterson, who is the president. And he was just enthusiastic about the participation of our students, especially in the first year. He was, you know, he's been doing this a long time and he figured, you know, if you get a few kids, that's great. At Central, 67 kids have participated in the program. And at Saxons River, 23 students have participated. So, I mean, across the entire S U, it's 144 kids. So it's, you know, they're just really excited and jazzed about it. And they're looking forward to welcoming us. I think, as I've mentioned before, we're, we're looking at how we might be able to provide some transportation for families who, that's a challenge for them. And so there'll be more information to come because I believe that game is June 15th when they get to go. So more information on that. Also, just James Vazina is our new business manager. He officially started today. He's hit the ground running. He's got lots of great ideas and, and he's been working to the point that he's, he's almost at a point where he's, he feels he's gotten our expenditures reports in order. So we should be getting those very quickly. So this is work he was doing prior to stepping on here. So he's next going to attack revenue so that we can have some accurate revenue reports. So as soon as, I'll check in with him tomorrow on what he thinks we might be able to provide the boards with expenditure reports. Also, Casey Eldredge Boyle, she's the, the accountant we are working with on just getting things cleaned up with FY21. She's actually working on FY22, pardon me. But one of the things she's really been focusing on is getting our assets versus liabilities in order. That has a lot to do with our banking, basically. And so she walked me through a lot of that today. It's, it's complex and needs to get cleaned up, but everyone's feeling that we're, we're going to be in pretty good shape. We're talking, we began a conversation about moving away from e-finance and looking at another product, but we're waiting. It's going to take, it's a two-year process, you know, the transition over. It's, yeah, it's not going to be easy in any way. We're actually, we briefly talked about looking at a product and having Westminster, the new Westminster district, use that because we have to build it anyway. And so if we can have a product that we can build from scratch, you know, use. And it's different than e-finance. We're not building it in e-finance and then having to move it over. So if we can pilot something this next year coming. So that's what we're talking about doing. But also the state may be giving some monies back to S U's who did get involved in the e-finance conversion. There's some monies left over that was support money. And so, you know, a new, a new program, e-finance was free. A new program will cost us on a yearly basis, but if we get some seed money to help with the transition over, that's what we're going to look at doing. So we're waiting to hear from that. You know, as, as all the principals mentioned, we're finishing up S Back testing. We're looking, along with some of the the climate survey stuff that Bill, you were asking for, we'll also present some of the findings we have from fall to winter on our, on our MAX testing, which kind of goes along with that, the S Back. We have one more early release day coming up. As Laura pointed out, our focus has been on social emotional learning and supporting our teachers. It's been very successful. And so we appreciate that the boards have allowed us to do that this year. Also, as mentioned, it's, you know, Teacher Appreciation Week. Tomorrow is Teacher Appreciation Day. So you find a teacher, give them a hug, give them a thanks. We have staff to do amazing jobs every single day, but it's a great opportunity for us to call them out this week. And then, as Laura also talked about with Lynn Lyons coming, and I just want to highlight that. So Lynn Lyons is a licensed clinical social worker and psychotherapist. And she will be at Bellows Falls Union High School on Wednesday, May 11th at 6:00 P M. And we are going to be offering some babysitting. And, you know, for those folks who need that, and I believe that there's going to be some pizza or some light refreshments, you know, because it is dinnertime. So we're hoping just to get some people out there.
What was the date on that?
It's Wednesday, May 11th.
May 11th.
And it's part of our just engaging families, but we really felt, you know, you know, her, her focus is on helping families and helping your families emotional health, do's and don'ts as we move forward. So, you know, just that focus on the pandemic. And that is it right now.
I have one question.
Thank you. Yes, Bill?
Andy, when will the new D I I person start?
July 1.
July 1.
So we are looking at, the Director of Innovation and Instruction will officially start July 1. You know, like, it's great. She will communicate on a regular basis. So as we're making decisions about next year, we're including her in those decision-making processes because it doesn't make any sense. Today, we interviewed for a M T S S or multi-tiered systems of support coordinator that will be funded through some grant funds. And that is really looking at the support for teachers, even on a more granular level of instructional practices really getting in there. So that person will work directly with the Director of Innovation and Instruction, but also Student Services, so in supporting all students.
Do you have a name for the D I I person?
We're going to be bringing that to the board on Wednesday.
Oh, that's great, okay.
I can wait to that time.
Okay.
Great.
Priscilla, I have a question.
Jigs, go ahead.
The, when do the, when are the S Back results finalized and ready for a presentation to the board?
You know, Jigs, I haven't been involved exactly when they come out, but typically we don't, my memory is we don't get them until next year.
Yeah.
Okay. Like sometime in fall.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not surprised, but the, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
We will make them sooner.
Okay. I'm assuming the finance update that just is starting today is what we, and you've already given information on that.
Okay. Just one question.
Sure.
Is if, can we expect to have the business manager occasionally attend our meeting and and present?
Yes. Yeah, we, we had that before, so now then, but with his starting date being today, we didn't think we wanted to make him come tonight. But yes, thank you for the question. Okay, W N E S U update. Chris, do you have anything on that that you want to share? Put you on the spot.
We haven't met since last time.
We met two weeks ago, right?
I think we had the update from last time.
We didn't, we did double check because I think it was quite a while ago.
We didn't have a meeting during vacation.
Yeah.
No, we did, it was the first week. It was right after our, the 6th of April, but it was after our last meeting is why I was thinking. But, yeah, but Andy's covered enough of this stuff, so I think we're all right. Okay. Committee updates. Esser, basically that was going to be the, the funding is going to meet everything asked for in May because the funds have to be used for Esser one by September. So that's what the committee is working on right, right now and really concentrating on to make sure no funds are wasted and we don't lose even, even $1. So anything you want to add to that, Andy?
No, I think that's, you know, I think we're going to try and, we just got to, we had some extra Fontis and Pennell materials that we purchased just to, originally when we put the order in, it was so that students weren't sharing because of COVID. And so we just need to finalize. We, we got And so we just need to finalize, we, we got, Jim DeBel was here, he could tell me exactly, but something like seven to ten pallets of, of reading materials. And so we had to go through and sort all that to make sure what we had and, and so, but the ESER one closes, we can't make any more amendments after May thirtieth or thirty-first, so that's.
So basically a little less than a month to go on that. Okay. Policy committee will, will be meeting tomorrow night to discuss C ten, C eleven, C twelve, and C fourteen, which prevention of harassment, hazing, bullying, student freedom of expression, prevention of sexual harassment, the policy on section five oh four and ADA grievance protocol for students and staff. And just make sure the draft of the plan policy is ready to go. So. Okay, unfinished business, approve the policies. F, F one, F twenty-three, F twenty-four, C seven and C eight. C seven is student attendance.
Maybe for folks that are listening, you could just read off the title sometimes.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do.
I, I didn't print them out, I'm sorry.
C seven is student attendance, C eight pupil policy rights, F one is travel reimbursement, F twenty-three capitalization of assets. And F twenty-four is prevention of conflict of interest in procurement. These are all, some of them needed for our grant policies. Are there any questions on those? I think those are all sent to the board members for review and they've been posted since February sixteen.
I would move to approve, just with a note that the dates on the end, I don't need to be fixed up.
You're right, I know that.
Yeah. Yeah, because they were adopted April fourth by the SU, but we'll want to make a note of when ours were adopted. I've got a chart for that.
Came from another board.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. That's why they're on now, we just got to get that one because we only have the SU one on there with ours, will have to be noted. Okay? Any other questions on it, any other comments when we vote? Okay, Jigs, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
And I do, okay, so those have been approved. I would ask that the board, if we, tomorrow night, that once they come out of committee and they're posted, we can accept that as the first warning of those, so that the warning has been done. Is that, is there any objection to that?
No.
No.
Then we'll do that by consensus and say that's the way we're going to do, we'll warn them that way. And then at least ten minutes, we, ten days after that, we'll put them on the agenda for adoption at our meetings. Okay? Andy, do you have a recommendation for the tuition? The maximum can be seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents because that's the equalized student count.
I, I would recommend that we, we posted seventeen thousand.
Okay. Any, any discussion on that for the board members?
Did, just a question, do you, do you have an exhibit that would indicate where that number came from, Andy? I think, I know this has been a, a struggle here, but in the future, I would like to see the, the, you know, numbers that support it. I mean, we're not, we're not trying to make a profit here, we're trying to basically pass on the, the cost of education, so.
Yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, for interrupting, I will work up some numbers with Jim because that was worked up a while ago and often, I, I remember, I found the number, but I can't remember how we got there off the top of my head, but we will work that out.
Last year was, so it is an increase from last year. Let's take, our, our going up.
And that's recommended tuition for which grades?
For K through eight. For any students that are in it, mostly we get students at the middle school level. But it does cover K through eight. Okay, can I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. The motion was made to accept the seventeen thousand tuition recommendation from the superintendent as our tuition for K through eight. Jigs, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
That's for next year.
That's for next year. Okay. Yeah.
Just to circle back and answer a question from Jigs. So one of the principals texted me that apparently we get the S-Back data almost immediately, so we will prepare that for our next board meeting for the schools that we have back already, so.
Okay, thank you. New business for discussion, action for any, we have resignations, appointments, retirees if any. We have a resignation, do we need to have a discussion about that in executive session before accepting that, or are we? What is the board's?
Is it, when is it effective, Priscilla?
June thirty, yeah.
Oh, I don't think we need, I wouldn't think we need an executive session, but that's, that's just my opinion.
Bill, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to accept the resignation of the sustainer. Of course. Effective June thirty, two thousand twenty-two. With regret, I will add to that motion.
Yes.
Jigs?
Uh, yes, aye.
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
And I vote, yes, with, definitely with regret. Do we have, we don't have any other resignations, right, at this point? Appointments? Any retirees that we want to?
I think we got them all already.
Okay, we've already got those. All right, and he is an invite from the Westminster Wyndham Northeast Unit Five School District. They wanted to know whether the Rockingham Board would like to have a meeting with their boards, a joint meeting. So I didn't know how the members felt about that, but I'm bringing it to you. It does mean an extra meeting, but.
May I speak on that a little bit?
Sure.
So I would highly recommend, I don't think it would necessarily mean an extra meeting, we could probably figure out a way to combine their, one of their meetings and one of yours and, and whether we alternate some way between a Monday and a Thursday or something of that nature. But in conversation with them and I, I think try, as we are working to try and align curriculum across our elementary schools, I, I think boards being on, you know, having the same understanding and moving in the same direction would be a real positive. It doesn't have to be on a monthly basis either, I don't think, I think they just, you know, when they presented it to me, it was just trying to bring people together, so.
Chris?
Andy, for the, for the sake of maybe my understanding, that school board basically changes on July first, is that correct?
Correct, the Westminster Board will be board.
Okay, so the, so the idea is that this would include both Athens, Crafton, and Westminster?
As we move forward, through July one, it would be all three boards meeting.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
So I have a clarification now. Curriculum is the purview of the SU board and not our local boards.
Right.
So I, yes, I would want a little clarification on what you mean when you're talking about aligning curriculum when we are actually not the board in charge of curriculum.
So, so when I talk about aligning curriculum, making sure you're aware of what we are teaching, just so that you have that knowledge and that what we're, what's happening in one school is not conflicting with what's going on in another school. So it's just making sure you're aware of things, but not, as you say, yes, picking and choosing.
So, if I might go on. I'm fine with, with doing this, I'd kind of like to know what the agenda would be as opposed to an awkward silence with us sitting around. So I just think that would need to be kind of, I would be happy to have this idea go forward, maybe the boards could kind of figure out what an agenda item could be. I could think of one right off the bat, which is that we have many of the kids from those schools articulate into the middle school and, you know, do, how's, how's that going? You know, we could talk about that certainly, and so, that's one point, but I'm sure there are others.
So would you like me to reach out to the two chairs of that board and see what we can come up with and I can bring this back to the board next time?
Oh, I think that would be great.
Okay. An agreement, Bill?
Yes.
Jigs?
Sounds good.
So I'll do that.
I have one question.
Okay, sure.
Andy, you mentioned aligning elementary curriculum as a purpose of us kind of breaking bread together. How detailed, this is a dumb question, I should know the answer, but I don't. How detailed a curriculum is now posted online as far as what we're teaching? Do we just have, I, I haven't searched because that's why this is a dumb question, but since we're talking about it right now, do we have something online for people to look at to see roughly through highlights or bullet points what their students are being, what their children are being taught?
Check something before I make an answer.
Yeah, I was trying to think if we're like seeing anything.
So under, on our W N E S U website, under departments?
Yes.
The last one is curriculum.
Okay.
And so there is a curriculum page that does break down literacy from all our grades, math for all our grades, science, social studies, the visual performing arts, health, P E and technology. And something that's hidden underneath their library and school counseling. To what granular depth between what's posted and what we're doing? I can't speak with one hundred percent certainty.
I wouldn't expect you to, but, okay, very good, that's a starting point.
Yeah, which is, is just an overview anyway for the boards to do, so. Okay. And moving on to board retreat ideas, and that was if time allows. Let's put, put that off till next time too, because I'm looking at the clock and it's starting late, I'm trying to keep this to a shorter meeting and we've got two things for executive session, so let's do director's comments. Jigs, do you have a director's comment?
No, I'm, I'm fine, thank you. I, I should say I had knee surgery a week ago and so I'll be zooming for a while here, so.
Good luck.
Okay.
But you can't, can't?
That's very good. Very good, Chris.
I couldn't resist.
That's okay.
Very good.
Bill?
Not at this time, thank you.
Chris?
I have some brief good news, I think, for, for us in Rockingham. So S two eighty-seven, which is the equalized, the weighted pupil bill that seemed so badly stuck in the House Ways and Means Committee a few weeks ago. I, I have to, I want to publicly recognize Emily Hornizer, who's not our rep, but she's from Rattleboro, and she was flexible in her thinking and came around to going with the Senate's version of this bill. So, believe it or not, it is possible that Rockingham taxes could go down. Not promising, but the, the net effect is that with this weighing of pupils, we actually, theoretically, our tax rate could be going down, at least it's not going up. And there's still a number of steps to go with that, the differences between the House and the Senate version have to be reconciled, and then the governor needs to sign it, so I never know what he's going to do and I have not, even when I was superintendent, I didn't know what he was going to do sometimes.
This is a funding formula, Chris?
Yes, this is.
From the state?
Yes.
This is how pupils are counted and it directly affects our taxes because basically equalized pupils are divided into the, the budget for your town. So the more equalized pupils you have, the smaller your tax rate is. So it's, the, the way this is going to work is we will end up with more equalized pupils.
What is an equalized pupil?
That's what we, well, going at, at town meetings.
Well, an equalized pupil recognizes that some kids are more expensive to educate than others.
Yes.
Okay, so kids live in poverty, special education, English is a second language.
Oh, okay.
And so those kids count as more than one student. And, and the question was whether it was going to use a, a new version of this, which is, was kind of the same as we had, or going to serve a block grant then, which had a lot of problems with it, I believe, in terms of equity and, and, okay.
Okay.
Justice, but anyway, without getting into it, the, the news seems to be good at the moment, but we need to kind of keep an eye on that.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Exciting few weeks, I think. Our schools are making progress in all areas. It was great to hear of all the exciting things going on. It's a good time to send a note or pleasant word to teachers to show how much they're appreciated on this week for a teacher appreciation. Remember, a little kindness ripples out and makes a difference in tumultuous times, which a lot of countries are facing right now. Okay, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for negotiation proposal and congressionally directed funding. Mature public knowledge could place the board at a disadvantage and invite Andy and any of our other administrators and Cheryl, Charles.
So.
Okay.
All right, give me a second to do that.
Jigs, we got a vote, Jigs?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Just a minute, we went to executive session. Seven twenty-one. Okay, all right, so we're going to come out of executive session at eight eleven. Date and time and, are we on?
Yes.
Okay, date and ti, there's no, no action that will be taken as a result of executive session. The next, the date of the next meeting will be May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty P.M. if needed.
Six thirty or five?
Six thirty. Because we have the four to six training one more time.
So that'll be a special meeting.
Yeah, so.
So six thirty is because of, of a, of a scheduling situation? So 6:30 is because of, of a, of a scheduling situation?
It's because of the four to six training for the chairs and other officers of the board or anyone else that wants to attend, Andy.
Oh, right, yeah. So 6:30?
Yes. If it's needed on, on another one this month, yes. Okay. The meeting is adjourned.